Robert Tucker. Dennis Barnum. Ignacio Legre. Sandy Anino. Anthony Sandoval. Anna Jimenez-Hami. Jackie Russell Garcia. Jorge Martinez. Anna Patricia Corrié. Lucinda Solornano. Thank you, we have four.
Let's move on to public comments. Are there any public comments today?
No.
Okay. Consent calendar items. Excuse the absence.
We have two. Yes, and Anthony.
Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Just a second.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, that's the end of the consent calendar, the business calendar. Election of Officers for the San Antonio Youth Council 2324. Elected Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of the San Antonio Youth Council. Nominations are now open.
So, if I may say something. Every year, we have to nominate our Chair and Vice Chair, Co-Chair, and so forth. So, we can nominate the same ones, we can nominate new ones. So, it's up to the group. If you guys would like to nominate and put forth nominations, we could then vote on them accordingly. And currently, our Chair is Bob, and our Vice Chair is Dennis.
I nominate Bob and Dennis.
Do we have to do them separately, or could they be done together?
We can, that's fine, we can do them together, because they're on the same report.
I'll nominate Dennis as the Vice Chair.
I think it follows nominations.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of the nominations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, any abstentions? I'm proud to do this.
You're so good at it.
He's coming. And thank you so much for the time. I know it does, you are, all of you are giving your time to help us with the youth, the community, trying to give services to the youth in our community. So, it is very much appreciated and valued. So, thank you, all of you.
That's the end of the business calendar, we'll move on to reports. So, YSPN.
Good afternoon, my name is Juan Casares, I'm here with C. Sandra, YSPN. Just a short report in regards to some of the activities we've been conducting since the last time we met. Currently overseeing, providing technical assistance to two of the providers. Orange County Conservation Corps and Orange County Therapeutic Arts Center. And Orange County Therapeutic Arts Center is currently recruiting for this current program year. They're the only providers onboard. And since July 1st, up until today, they have a total of their 12 enrollments. There are going to be only 20 participants for this current program year. And then, for last program year, there was a total of 42 exited participants who are going to be in an follow-up process. Hopefully capturing other performance measures throughout these upcoming four quarters. And also, we completed a total of 54 follow-ups from previous program years that were followed. And majority of them were in their fourth quarter after exit. So, those were participants that were exiting program year 21, no, 2122. So, we're finally going to finish them off the system. And waiting for the outcomes from the state. Also, as most of you are aware, we are going to be pretty much running an in-house program for WEOU here at the center. We're going to be enrolling 20 participants and serving all out-of-school U. Going to be providing various wraparound services under the WEOU elements. One of the major components, of course, is going to be work experience, paid work experience. So, we're currently still trying to get it wrapped up. We're looking into purchasing assessments, whether it's going to be tape or costs, or a lot of logistics. And hopefully, they'll come down pretty fast. Majority of our recruitments, we're hoping to pick up from our other youth employment programs that we have in-house, from the SAVE program and the California For All. Some of those participants have already successfully completed those employment programs. So, we might be recruiting from there. And of course, reaching out throughout the community for other participants. So, that's pretty much my report. I know Dora and Jessica from Conservation and Optak will be providing more detailed reports regarding their case loans.
And if I, go ahead.
Any questions? Yes, starting to recruit. We are already looking into it. Like I said, we're working on the logistics. Making sure we have, like, as you're aware, the assessments in place to conduct all that. And other small details. But we are actively already.
So, if you have anybody that is interested, let us know, and then we'll work out the details with them and figure out if maybe we borrow an assessment, or if they're ready to enroll, we can figure out and go that right, that route. And I'll give a little bit more details, too.
The program has, has there ever been seeking out young adults that are higher functioning autistic? That don't necessarily fall within the disability of like San Antonio Center or the Department of Rehab? Looking at those type of populations or seeking out those?
I'm not really clear-cut on that, but I think it's going to be open as long as they meet the eligibility requirements for WEOU. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
Since it's a wraparound program, like, I mean, they have higher needs in regards to like job coaching and job assistance. So, like being able to.
Yes, I know we're serving, like I said, mostly out-of-school participants. Most likely, we're probably going to be looking at 18 to 24. The other big components is if some of these participants are pursuing vocational training, we cannot provide vocational training under WEOU. But we will refer them to our adult programs where possibly complete dual enrollment into the adult program where they can provide a ITA which pays for their vocational training.
And to further answer your question, we can serve individuals with disabilities. I know that's one of the main reasons why we love Dr. Anna's program is because she's so focused on youth with disability, and she knows how and works really well with these. However, we also serve youth with disabilities within our other programs to provide them work experience. If they do choose to go through adult training, they do assessment. So, it might be a little bit more challenging to get into those training, but it doesn't mean to say they can't enroll in our work experience. Currently, we do have youth that have high functioning autistic or in the spectrum in our SAVE employment program and in our California For All program. And so, we find employment that will provide those soft skills and guidance and that they're still able to successfully complete the program. It might not lead into full intensive training, but they will at least get that work experience. And one of the really great employers that we have is Chapter 1 that has done amazing things with some of our youth. And I believe they're also a partner of Department of Rehab. So, if there is a participant that comes to us, and maybe they have more extensive needs that we're not experienced in helping them with, then we will connect and partner up with Department of Rehab so that they're able to provide any more intensive wraparound services so that they're able to get the same services. Did that answer your question?
No, yeah, because, yeah, it's a very low percentage of employment within that community. And so, just interested in see, because we do have a lot in our foster unit. I know it's a difficult population, our foster unit, to stay consistently involved. But we do see a lot of, where you have adults with autism or on the spectrum. Finding the difficulty finding employment.
And we do, like, and we've had a couple individuals that have enrolled. And it's easy when they disclose so that we're able to help them. It's when they don't disclose that it makes it challenging for us and the worksite. Because the interpretation of how they're acting out and what they're doing is completely misunderstood. I think that's where we're struggling, and where we struggled, where they don't disclose. And so, it's portrayed differently. And then we, and then our hands are tied because it's portrayed differently. And I think that's always our challenge, that we allow every opportunity during the assessment, and we're working with them to make sure to ask them if there's anything, we will help you, we'll connect you. Just let us know so that we're able to best match you with the appropriate worksite. But just to add to what Juan was saying, you know, one of our goals was to make sure to offset the 20% expenditure for work experience with our new WEOU program. We have Dr. Anna's great program, and they're also providing work experience. But them alone will not satisfy the 20% that we're required to meet for, to be in compliance with WEOU. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were still in compliance this year with just the one agency. And so, that is why we're looking to enroll 15 to 20 youth. We are going to pay them $17 an hour, up to 500 hours total for their work experience. So, it is going to be heavy-based work experience. And then, since we already have Juan onboard, and he's modest, but I'm having him do quite a bit. And I'll talk a little bit more about that also. But he will be my lead in case managing those particular youth and helping with eligibility, enrolling them, and pretty much overseeing that program. And so, our goal is definitely, we have already launched, and then finding the different resources, connecting them with adults, finding out what adult services we can offer to them, too. And then, of course, the community along with our other partners, as far as what the youth will need. Every youth is different, and every youth requires different assistance and wraparound services. So, we want to make sure that we're aware of those as we have been, and if there are any new ones that we can tap into. Addition to what we have been doing, we are running our SAVE employment program and our California For All. So far, with our SAVE employment program, we've received over 399 applications this past year. We've enrolled 229 youth total for our SAVE employment program. And we've developed 35 work sites and 125 positions for these particular youth. And then, for the California For All program, we've received 307 applications and enrolled 266 youth with, with. So, we're trying to offset, as you know, WEOU requires and has their strings attached, which we can appreciate also, and outcomes. So, we wanted to have these particular programs in the cities allowing us and providing some of the funding to be able to offer these services along with the other services that we're providing. And Juan has been helping in different capacities to make sure that we're able to service all of these youth. I do have other staff, obviously, that are helping with the case management of this, but it's not as intensive or intensive with the wraparound services as WEOU is. So, we're able to enroll a lot easier, a lot more, and be able to serve a bigger population, but still provide the great services of gaining soft skills, the training, the workshops, and potentially referring them out to some of our providers so that they can enroll and obtain more wraparound services. So, it's been busy.
I was going to ask you a question about that, Sandy. So, let's say that we co-enroll, let's say with the city, for a young adult that wants his work experience at the city. The city pays their work experience, right?
Are they enrolling with us, or are they enrolling with you guys?
They're already enrolled with the city. I just have, I have a few participants that want to do work experience with the city, but they are already with the city.
Yeah, so if they started off with the city or one of our other programs, they could continue until they finish while receiving your wraparound services that the city does not offer. As long as they're not duplicating, we're not double dipping into the services, that you're not giving them a bus pass. We're not giving, we're both giving them bus passes, we're both providing.
So, we can co-enroll then?
Yes.
We can co-enroll, okay, okay.
And provide the other services that you're offering, tutoring, counseling.
Exactly, got it.
Yes.
Sure, I did that show at last meeting, that I didn't know that my son had been a part of the SAVE program to do, one of the providers is through the Raya Foundation. So, my son is a basketball, the Raya Foundation has been a very great community partner with us. And so, he got employed by them, and then not knowing that they're a participant of the SAVE. And so, he just completed his hours recently, and then he was asked if he wanted to do the.
California?
The California. He's like, Mom, I get more hours, I get a raise. And, you know, I just want to say that the Raya Foundation has, is very accommodating. They've hired many, many youth within the, through the program throughout the whole high school. You see them out there at community events, and my son loves it. He's getting that work experience, it's something that he loves and thrives in. And, you know, it's within the city of Santa Ana. So, I just want to say it's a great program, and it's a great provider.
Thank you, and for reminding me also, we set it up so that the youth start with the SAVE employment program, getting paid $16 an hour. And then, if they show that they're looking to improve continuously, they get that raise and get co-enrolled if they qualify under the California For All, of course, which most of them do. Again, their easier eligibility criteria. And then, they get that extra, those extra hours of work experience. So, it becomes a stepping stone, this motivator and incentive for them to do well, impress their worksite, and really show, just like we do, right? How do we get promoted? We don't get promoted because we look pretty. We get promoted because we do well, and we do what we're supposed to do at work. And that's kind of the mentality that we have for the program.
Let's hear from Dr. Anna.
That's fine.
Okay, so this is our current year, 2324. Like Juan mentioned, we have a total of 12 enrollments already, and we're currently 15. So, hopefully, by the end of September, we'll, that'll put us at 15, plus whoever else comes in as recruitment. But one of our youth was carried over from last year, from 2223. So, technically, that puts us at 13. But if you look at the graph, this shows us where, what barriers our current youth are facing. So, 18 of our youth have basic skills, are basic skills deficient, nine are low income, one is homeless, three have poor work history, nine have disabilities, one is foster. And then, one is foster. That was the title. I think it was two foster ones. But. So, all of these certain, all of the 12 are actually engaged in Optak, they're gaining work experience. And these are the three programs that they're currently enrolled in, so technological art. And a little bit, this is a new program, we have a seven-year program, it's on parades. And we have the three different courses. So, there's the advanced course, we have an intermediate, and we have a beginner course. So, in our beginner course, we have two youth. And our intermediate, we have one, and then our advanced, and our advanced course is one also. In our digital media and digital arts and media, that's a very popular class, video production, comic book creation, and digital animation. So, we have a total of nine youth in those classes. So, those are very popular. And then, we also have two youth who are completing their work experience as office clerks. And they assist not only the front desk, but they're also getting to know different programs we have at Optak, helping them with sorting, getting soft skills. That's what they're doing at our center. 11 out of our 12 participants are currently, so currently doing work experience. And then, one of our youth is also working part-time as a barista at Starbucks. Our school update, nine of our youth enrolled or are enrolling in school. Two of them are in high school. Two of them enrolled into Santa Ana College this past month. One of them enrolled in Irvine Valley College. Two are starting at North Orange Continuation Education. And then, two actually just began going to, or university. One is attending Cal State Plowton, and the other one is attending Cal College. Now, moving on to our follow-ups, our summary. Very successful year. These are our barriers. So, all of our youth, the 20 were basics skills deficient, 15 low income, three homeless, 11 poor work history, five with disabilities, four foster, and then three parenting. I do want to say, though, that these numbers were based off from when they started the program year. So, for example, even though it says three homeless, currently only one is homeless. The other two now have housing. That's good. And where are they now? So, employment, out of the 20, 15 are employed or in the school, and so, we're doing both. So, one of our participants, she was hired full-time at Disneyland, she's a merchandise seller. And when she started our program, she was working part-time at Panera. So, that's a big step for her. Another participant, she was doing the childcare work path at Optak, and she is now a teacher and assistant at SA USC. She's working there part-time. Another participant, he helps with the IT department at Optak. Another one who's a parent, a single parent. When she started, she didn't have a job, she was trying to find out what she wanted to do career-wise. And she joined the childcare work path, and she got to get a job at HSA, she's an AV therapist. And she's also enrolled at Optak. Another of our youth, another parent, another single parent. She was doing an internship at a healthcare clinic. And with that experience, she was able to get a job as a receptionist at a medical place. Another participant is a part-time receptionist. And then, this was a huge success, I think. One of our foster youth, who was working part-time, helping selling shoes. She was actually hired full-time as a cashier at a yogurt lab. So, going from part-time to full-time. And she was also doing the healthcare, the childcare work path. But a big improvement there. And then, two of our participants recently informed us that they are becoming caregivers at a hospice facility. And they're going to work with elderly. And our school update is, so, from the 20, five started or re-enrolled in Santa Ana College. Three of them are attending Ghost College, and then two of them are at Cal State Plowton. And they're both juniors, so they graduate next year. And then, really quick, we don't have a participant, everyone's in school in the afternoon, but I did get a story, he sent this to me, his name is Robert. So, I'm going to roll what he sent. He's our professor, so he said, "My name is Robert, but I go by Bobby. I joined the GIVE program because I've been struggling to find a job. I have a disability and have only had one job. The staff have helped me re-enroll to college after taking two years off. They helped me figure out what classes I need to take as a music major. I have also joined the video production class and the sound engineering classes at Optak. I feel comfortable in class and am learning a lot. I would like to pursue a job in sound engineering one day, and I feel like I'm in the right direction." And you, does it have any questions?
Oh, excellent. Orange County Conservation Corps.
And although OCC, we did extend our agreement through December, so they are finishing up their follow-ups, exiting their U. And so, I'm happy to still have them here with us.
Hello, everyone. So, as Sandy mentioned, we are finishing up the year, so we don't have any more moments. So, this report is going to be based off last fiscal year. So, those who are currently in our follow-up services. So, among the 23 participants that we had enrolled last fiscal year, all of them were basic skills deficient. But not only that, they did also face a lot of other challenges. We did have high school dropout, we have those who were ex-offenders, those with poor work history or no work history at all. We did have one foster youth, one parenting youth, and a lot that were experiencing homelessness as well. These factors, or these barriers, I should say, kind of went. They did improve on most of them. There's the home, those who were experiencing homelessness, there were a lot who had found housing as well. And those who are currently in transitional housing as well. We did offer a lot of targeted interventions. For example, those who did not have their high school diploma, we did enroll all of them into a high school program so that they can work on obtaining their high school diploma. We, of course, gave them job training so they can work on their core history, or core work history. And we also were able to give our parenting youth parenting resources through the resource centers throughout Orange County, so they were able to get parenting classes. For those who were basic skills deficient, we were able to facilitate the post-teen test to 12 of those. And so, we did see some score improvements in either reading or math, and sometimes in both of them. So, this kind of shows that our target intervention and focus instructions did enhance them, to advance them in their skills and enhance their employability for participants. As far as workplace might go for their work experience, the image below illustrates the count of youth who were successfully finished their work experience within our projects. These projects offer practical learning and skill development across diverse industries, including conservation, recycling, retail, IT, office administration, and warehouse. By engaging in hands-on experiences, our participants gained valuable insights and expertise in these fields which provided a well-rounded foundation for their future careers. For certification and credentials of interest, our program does empower individuals to to enroll into some sort of vocational training. So, our program does offer the security guard card and forklift certificates. And among the 23 participants, four participants were able to obtain their forklift certificate in order to go into that industry. For participants employed in industry, so these are going to be where our participants are currently based right now after their WEP has ended. Participants in the WEP program were able to secure employment across various industries such as office administration, groundskeeping and land keeping, IT department, warehouse, retail, and food service. This diverse range of industries underscores the program's effectiveness in preparing participants for a wide array of job opportunities. So, they were able to gain experience in their work experience, and then they were able to find employment in similar industries as well. For those who, as I mentioned earlier, those who did not have any secondary education, or did not finish it, I should say, all of them were able to enroll into high school diploma. They still are currently in that program now, so they are still working towards that. They still are currently in that program now, so they are still working towards that. We also had three participants enroll into post-secondary education. So we have one participant who's currently working towards a photography degree at um Santa Ana College. We have one participant who is working toward a business degree at Long Beach Community College. And we also have one who is currently enrolled in the uh Santa Ana Continuing Education Program for her Office Administration Certificate. And we are currently working on two others enrolling for um the next semester coming up for spring. And as far as our success story, um we do have one participant who's not able to make it because he is at work. So I also have a uh story from him, he sent it to me earlier today. Um, he says, "My name is Blake Santana. I joined the Orange County Conservation Corps in September twenty twenty-two. I grew up in foster care, which was tough, but OCC gave me a chance to learn and overcome my challenges. Starting in recycling department, I was introduced to the wor- world of work. It was my first job, so I did not know what to expect. I found out it was more than just sorting materials, but also about teamwork, responsibility, and the value of hard work. After a few months, an exciting opportunity came my way when I was chosen to work at Goodwill's computer repair store. Every day, I got to learn something new, from fixing minor glitches to understanding the workings of a computer. My efforts didn't go unnoticed, recognizing my dedication and the skills I had developed, Goodwill extended a full-time job offer to me. I accepted the position and I'm still employed through Goodwill. Now with what I've learned, I'm thinking about going to college. I want to study more about computers and maybe get a certificate in IT. Looking back, joining the OCC was one of the best decisions. It was more than just a job, it was a stepping stone to a brighter future. I'm thankful for their continued assistance." Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, uh let's move on to the work study session, the request for proposal study session.
Okay, so I wanted to bring us back full circle, as you are aware, we procured for four years, the last time around with our RFP, and we got our awesome provider, um Children's Therapeutic Arts Center. It is just the one provider um that was chosen, and so we're offsetting the requirement that WEOWA has for us, which is the twenty percent uh work experience expenditure of on our entire funding, in addition to seventy to eighty percent of out-of-school expenditures. And so we need to make sure that within the money that we received, that we're still meeting those goals, that the work center or the city uh program that we're we're doing this year. I wanted to bring it back to ask and to get some direction from the group on how you would like us to proceed. As far as reissuing, we already have a procurement that is four years for uh Children's Therapeutic Arts Center, that's set already. Uh, we have the option, obviously, if we want any new providers outside in the community, we have to reissue a new request for pro- the, a new request for proposal. And so that option is we could do it for another three years, so that that procurement ends when the current four-year one will be ended, and then we start anew. Um, the other option is also to extend and make the current city program a little bit bigger to offset that. Uh, currently, I know the worst that happens. Uh, currently, we do have approximately four hundred thousand that we can procure, that we can procure for a new program, not counting what we've already procured for the current program um for program year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. So July twenty twenty-four through June twenty twenty-five, should we release the RFP? Any questions? I know that was a mouthful. Does everybody understand what, so I need guidance for you on how you would like us to proceed as far as reissuing an RFP, um.
So would you like us to take the RFP and tweak it and re-release it, and see if there's, if we can get a larger pool to respond? We still have an RFP, so Dr. Anna, your organization would stay on that list for the four-year period, and then we're just releasing an RFP to procure programs for up to four hundred thousand dollars. Because right now, after Sandy and I met with the accountants yesterday, penciled out um contract obligations, we estimate we have four hundred thousand that's not um obligated our program. And so we kind of thought, RFP might be a route that you might want us to pursue since it is up to four hundred thousand, so basically we'd ask to procure and then add people to the procurement list, and then as we have funds, come back to you to, so yes, you know, fund for this.
I know we, um, well, we had awarded, or we had awarded, got the award, and they talked about, I mean, why was there so much low participation? Or, or people provided because of the complexity of the grants and uh the requirements. You guys have had a long history, you have great administrative support, uh it's, this isn't just your, you know, um bread and butter, right? You have other uh funding sources, and so it's difficult for like nonprofits to be able to uh, you know, engage in this type of um work program. Whereas like you say, these are unrestricted, and so you have a program that's successful that's working with the students of um Santa Ana, or you know, the the population of Santa Ana. I mean, I would, for me, I mean, I I kind of feel that you would, you know, use that funding to increase the participant pool um as more youth need more um services, right? And then maybe go after the the more challenging youths, like the foster youth, there's a lot of homeless youth partnering maybe with the Orangewood Foundation, which is one of the hubs for uh foster information current and former uh youth, maybe doing that um with the four hundred thousand dollars.
I concur.
Yeah, I do too.
Kind of restating what you just said, uh why not use the money just to bolster uh known great programs that we already have, resources that we have here in-house? And maybe down the road, when we start thinking about RFPs way down the road, to figure out why organizations, they look at the bureaucracy, the requirements that we owe, and they're just going, you know, it's too much, and the money's not enough for what you're and maybe that's too blunt to say, but for what you're making us uh have to do. Uh, so with the understanding that WEOWA is likely to be up before Congress, I think, next year?
Yeah, there's um discussion of the the law expires or is up for ten years is next year. And so it's up for renewal, so it's Congress, we don't know.
So I mean, that's a national.
It might be on continuing resolution for a few more years.
So you guys are in touch with the rest of the country occasionally?
Yeah.
Obviously, there's gonna be other places in the country that are saying, we've gotta find a better way to compete. I mean, I like hearing seventeen dollars an hour, because I drove by McDonald's and it's at sixteen twenty-five. So that's, yay! Uh, so uh that's good, so I like, I I like the idea of bolstering
Yes.
what we already have, and then strategizing down the line to figure out how we can be more considered attractive with less
Right.
drugs, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we discussed that in our meetings and thought, maybe you know, four years down the road, we'll have something else to put in, something to take out, to make it more attractive.
Yeah.
What is the feasibility as far as staffing goes to be able to do this? I'd be interested in hearing that in how much.
To bolster like the in-house youth program, we'd probably um ask to hire at least a part-time person to take on some of the case management and the time card collections and whatnot and recruitments. I probably wouldn't argue for a full-time, a second full-time staff because of the ups and flows of the funding. But definitely need to ramp up on the staff for that particular grant.
And then, uh, am I understanding also bolstering the help, um, Dr. Anna's program?
Right.
So it'd be upping both of them or just the one, I mean, because that could be something that we work out also as far as making sure.
Or, or here's a creative idea, where we uh partner. As we were talking before, where we co-enroll, and the city pays those additional participants, and we provide some of the in-house service, and maybe we can hire another case manager to help with that. That co-enrollment, something like that, it's just a thought.
Yep.
Because I think uh the biggest burden for any nonprofit, and I think you said it, you know, well, is the view of new reciprocity, but also uh we have a tradition, and we've been doing it, where we first start with a stipend period, you know, just to kind of train them how to do their time sheets and things like that, before we actually hire them as part-time employees. But that takes a lot of, you know, other users, teaching them, training them, coaching them, mentoring them, to to turn them in on time and do the math correct and stuff like that.
No whiteout.
And no whiteout, so all of this stuff takes time, so there, we do need a case manager that will definitely focus on the additional youth. I I love your idea about the Orangewood, so maybe it's like co-enrolling participants that the city is the fiscal agent. Because what I was gonna say is that it really is, oh, financially like strenuous to to for any nonprofit to add on in addition to the staff, the youth as employees. But the city can do it easier, so the city can be the fiscal uh agent to pay the youth. And we can just maybe get an additional staff uh to help that additional group of participants. And we would have to figure out how, you know, many participants, and the city will pay the youth, that's the biggest expense, paying the youth. And so, and then, and then that, I think if we can partner with Orangewood also to focus on that foster youth, and maybe another organization that focuses on homeless youth. Because those, those are, I mean, we're already serving a lot of youth with disabilities, like almost fifty percent, and almost every year. At least fifty percent, right? Some years we're a little bit lower than that, but this year, we have already have nine youths, right? Nine youths with a disability, and of course, we still have to recruit like eight more.
Nine.
So that's good, right? So it's almost, you know, fifty fifty, but but I think we do need more foster youth, I I agree with you, it's such a difficult population, because even though with us in the past where we have had more than one, two, three, at times you've had three, four foster youth, but they are difficult to to, where it's difficult to keep them enrolled.
And and let me just say, it's difficult because of the placement disruptions.
Yes.
The one successful one that I think is still going to Kelsey Fortune, she's had a really uh consistent placement with with family and I think with transitional housing.
Yeah.
So the placement with disruption is really, you know, the number one cause for all of this.
And we have a really successful foster youth too, right, is the one that got the full-time job, right, at the clinic?
We have two.
Two.
Two that actually, but it's also because their placement has been stable.
Yes.
But it's because they've been coming to the center, getting, and they've been getting all the help they need.
Right.
They get all the resources, so they're on it.
So, yeah. The 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 foundation, the Orangewood Foundation is, it is, it's one of the um uh one of those um referral points for the um homeless, um I forgot the, yeah, the the care, the congregant care, where they they can make the referrals. They have a lot, they're homeless, that they um, they have a content for homeless youth.
Okay.
Um, not just specifically foster youth, but homeless youth take, a transitional age youth within that sixteen to twenty-four age gap. And then um we also have the Foundation for the, for strictly for foster youth, where we contract with them through the Orangewood, uh through social services, uh so they can, they can address both. And they have consistent youth coming every day to the center.
Maybe we need to place, what, I'm sorry, Lucy, maybe we need to place one case manager at Orangewood that can be the liaison for the city and for OTAC. Because that's always been a, a target population that's so difficult, both homeless, uh although uh Conservation Corp also serves homeless, which is great. Uh, right? But, but you see what I mean? So, um, my, my point is for you too, right?
All right, no.
He's a parent right now.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. But you see what I mean, because uh, because maybe, I'm just saying maybe, I don't know, you know, what you feel about it, but but it's because Orangewood is also, is also big, and there's, there's so many participants there. It'll be difficult to navigate that figuring out what participants, if 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 the focus is foster youth, and I mean, it doesn't only have to be Orangewood, but my point is like, if we go that route, it would be a good idea to have a liaison stationed at Orangewood, but but OTAC would definitely need another case manager for this. Uh, and we have to probably figure out how many more participants do we want?
I think we would need to figure out the logistics as far as how this would roll out, and then also looking at um, I like serving the foster youth, but maybe serving them um as they transition out, because we need to meet the out-of-school youth.
Right.
Um, expenditure, which is that eighty, seventy, eighty percent. And so that, that's also been the challenging part of WEOWA is that they limit us to so many in-school youth.
Right.
That we can serve them right now, that's why Dr. Anna is the only one serving in-school youth, where the work center is gonna only serve out-of-school youth.
Well, you guys, the thing is that, the people, the, the kids that are going are out of school. Are the kids that are experiencing the homeless uh placement disruption, are re- trying to re-enter uh foster care. Um, are, you know, the, these are the young adults that that don't have anything else, right? Um, they haven't finished high school, um, you know, they just don't know what else to do, so they go in there for hot meals because it's a drop-in center, so they go in there for hot meals, they have showers, they have um laundry services, right? And, you know, they provide a a vast number of of other services, not just for our it's actually our in-school youth that really don't utilize their services. Um, it's, it's mostly for out-of-school, uh out-of-school youth.
I, I, I think it's worth definitely talking more in-depth about, as you're talking about it, I'm thinking we start them off with the same employment program for two hundred, a hundred and fifty hours, they show themselves, we co-enroll them into the WEOWA program. So now they've established the workshops, the, the how to succeed on the job, and we kind of obtain their wraparound services as far as where they're at, so that they're able to be successful also in the WEOWA program, which offers a more intensive wraparound services. But I know most of the youth coming, also, they're homeless, they need the money. It needs to be quick, and they need to enroll quick, as, you know, when you start looking at um all the extra things that go into WEOWA eligibility, I think maybe gain them in the same program as easier.
Before the emancipation, right?
Money, and we can start getting them going and seeing their commitment and following through so that we know WEOWA is good.
So we have a lot of people that are already emancipated, that are twenty-one and over, that are not in school, don't have a job, that experience homelessness. But at twenty-one, we no longer provide placement support, right? And so we still have transitional housing available, but these are, th- this is a population that maybe doesn't want to be in that program, doesn't, you know, or or maybe didn't, wasn't successful um because they were in that program. So they're, they're serving kids that are over twenty-one, twice.
So I'm hearing um the idea of collaborating and finding areas where there's the greatest need for more staffing, so there'll be more staffing here. I mean, Juan's got a lot of responsibility right now, just to say the least, right? Um, in fact, um, how do you, how would you envision a need for staffing here? Uh. More, some more, at least, right?
Well, the, the extra help, of course, uh always, always comes. It's a big asset, but I know the struggles with the funding, it's never it's never a set funding, it's always changing year after year.
No opportunity.
Yeah, so hopefully with reauthorization of workforce programs like WEOWA, where they use enough, you know, uh it's, it's, it's very, very rigid. I like these programs, like Say Calvin Law, where whom offer, you know, the great opportunities, but at the same time, WEOWA, it, it's kind of like a, a a bigger step, I think, I think where some of these programs, they, they need to start targeting youth and empowering youth, and for example, through apprenticeships. I think that's the way to go, especially uh those, those youth who, um, you know, are struggling with, with just uh daily expenses, you know, a paid apprenticeship program. There, there'll be learning and, 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 and earning There there'll be learning and 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 earning and learning at the same time, you know. Um that's another component that we can start looking into investing with youth apprentices.
I I come from youth background and what was much kind of neighborhood and there's always room for improvement there. Sometimes they say, well, we're full, we've got a waiting list and such, uh there's opportunities.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm I I've also been assisting Sandy with, you know, updating our eligible transfer readiness. There is a lot of these community colleges that are coming on board and I see they got some great programs, short-term programs. That some of these youth could take advantage of, uh just steering them in the right way. Um possibly providing some some tutoring if needed. Uh and then possibly using some work experience, you know. Uh to get them, once they complete that program, getting some work experience and hopefully landing a good job.
Like San Ana College also has a work experience program, right? We could maybe try to meet with them also and have a. Study session with them too.
Annabelle Neary, Dr. Neary.
Yeah, so we have established a connection with them.
Yeah. And 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 I know because I'm working with one of the departments right now, they're really looking into. Um um for example, in the educational path, the non-credit. Moving from a non-credit path to a credit path. So that's very exciting. They've been talking about it forever, but now finally it's starting to happen. And so that will be a great opportunity for for our Weowas youth to start with the non-credit, which is less threatening to them. That's how we start most of our youth with the non-credit and then as they are identifying programs that. There is a, you know, pathway to from non-credit to credit, then they can stay enrolled in college and. So this is this is.
Yeah, I've seen in news where some employers are saying college degree not required because they need workers. And if you look at your in the background of experience, whether it's conservation for your program or what you do here, uh. That's a less real work.
Yeah, there's both. Yeah, there's.
Great ideas here. Do you just you feel you have some direction from us?
I think so.
Think we can meet with Dr. Anna and then come together with some ideas of the what could be done with that four hundred thousand and then bring it back to the committee in October's meeting. Maybe write it in an action where you can make an action, vote, take an action vote at that same day, but still do some massage into it if you wish and adjust the uh. Uh the recommended action from the floor and then we could take it to the board in November and go from there.
Other input from people on our discussion here?
I just wanted to say that um we really talked about Coastline. Um Community College and when you're kind of looking at special ed students, Coastline is an amazing program. That the students can go to and get tiered credentials, tiered. You know, they take a step and a step and a step and they finally end in the end, but they've got. Training and they've got education and they're a really good program.
Do you work with Steve Carell at Coastline? Or if you have a point of contact?
Sure, but I could get you a point of contact. Because I worked with them quite a bit in Santa Ana. Moving my transition students from that wanted to go to college that really needed the extra assistance.
Other input or other ideas or thoughts?
Is there a program that we can think of right now that's a nonprofit and looking towards the future, like in AI? Field out there?
I know we've talked to Dr. Neary about that and Santa Ana College has an um. A cybersecurity type program that is incubating and growing and also um. That we can work with if the youth need help at Centennial Education Center and then get them segwayed over into that IT program or cybersecurity. And there is an RERP grant and I want to say AI might be part of that grant with four of our community colleges. So we're learning more, like it challenges and stand out, keep an eye on that grant, so we can get the youth into careers of the future.
And we're really excited when we heard Dr. Neary talking about her AI. They have a whole department under it now that they're really. Uh bolstering and making uh better and it's impacted because it is, it is, it is enticing to the students. So we will keep an eye on it to see how many kids we can get along and, you know, they're always open to doing a class and allowing us if we can get enough students. To fill their class because to tell them, oh, hold the class for us and then we don't have any students, that's not gonna work.
I think we'll be seeing some reasonable guardrails on how to work with AI coming from. Sometimes the less knowledgeable Congress. It's sometimes embarrassing watching them try to engage that, but um fortunately they have staff that will help. So I know schools initially their reaction, AI, stop it, what did I get rid of the, you know, come on, it's not going away.
But Jorge, we're also keeping our eye on drones too. Ford and Community College and I want to say Orange Coast also has a drone. So we're also keeping an eye on that too.
The school district offered a drone, uh I don't know if it was a certificate, but they offered a drone class for middle school and. High schoolers during the summer.
Ideas and opportunities, things are changing. I'm already using AI and photo editing, which is scary. But the the unions always have a concern that as we go forward that. If workers are. Lose their jobs or have to find other employment because of AI. That there's retraining for them, which your programs offer job training. And when they say, well, just stay away, don't use the self-checkup, it's not gonna work. You know, that's, I mean. And it's adapting to it. It's like, you know, back in the day when they said, um, I I want to pass, I don't get rid of my black blacksmith shop, I want that. Well, we're still some in um. Some places. So yeah, it's here and it's important to get in front of it, understand it as best we can and prepare for it and. Make sure there's a seamless transition transition to any technology. Uh anything else from folks?
Sandy, before you set us over here.
I was just gonna introduce him.
How's it going? My name is Cecil Quinces. I'm the district manager of Project Hope Alliance. A little bit about myself, um I started working with the city of Santa Ana, specifically the Santa Ana Works Center in two thousand nine. I did the summer program, was at the Boys and Girls Club. After that, I had the pleasure of being part of the Transition Partnership Program with Jackie Russell Garcia. I graduated high school and I didn't know what I was gonna do. I ended up back at the Santa Ana Works Center where I did the STEM program with Brenda. After that year that I did that program, I she she sat with me and she's like, hey, you know, you would do really good. Um you applied at this this position and I was like, what what is it? And she's like, the Employment Development Department is hiring for youth employment program specialists. And I was like, I have no idea what I'm gonna do with my life and I was currently at Santa Ana College. And she's like, I'll help you apply. And I was like, okay, let's let's do it. Like, I have no idea, you know, what I'm gonna do. Um and I read the job restriction and it talked about working with at-home youth, me myself being an at-home youth. I said, you know what? Let me try it. Uh I spent right around three years with the Employment Development Department. And then from there, I met Jackie Russell Garcia in a meeting similar to this. She explained to me her program. I was like, hey, I do your program when I was in high school. I spent five years with SAUSD as a job coach. Um I worked closely with OTAC and would go check up on the kiddos there. Um I spent a year at Community Action Partnership of Orange County and now I'm on my second year at Project Hope Alliance. Yeah, so it brings me a lot of joy and it warms my heart to hear things that are going down in the city, especially with work experience. Because if it wasn't for programs like this, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be able to share my story and tell you that. Um I beat the odds thanks to people like Brenda, thanks to people like the Employment Development Department, thanks to people like Jake's work.
So good for the chill, must start crying.
So you saw the value of this organization's product and how it first, and now you're bringing value to the community as well.
Yeah, and I'm and I'm happy to share that this is my eleventh year doing this. Um I look back and I'm like, wow, this this is my career. Um and I'm happy because I'm back in Santa Ana. So with Project Hope Alliance, I was working in New Forest University School District. But as of January, I'm back here in Santa Ana working at Scholarship Prep Academy. So I'm here to share a little about Project Hope Alliance. So again, I'm a district manager. The cool thing about Project Hope Alliance is that it's case managed, so we work with kiddos from kindergarten up until twenty-four. Uh kiddos that are McKinney Bento, kiddos that are experiencing homelessness and we walk alongside them and provide them. Basically, anything that they need. We can help them out with the PS five, but if they're doing soccer and they need soccer seats, we can help them out with that. Um this week, um our families, we got a huge nation of fans, so I went out and provided fans. Uh two weeks ago, we had our backpack drive and we were providing our kiddos with backpacks and a hundred dollar gift cards. So the cool thing about the program is that it's now in Santa Ana, currently working at Santa Ana High School. Like I said, Scholarship Prep Academy, which is a charter school here in Santa Ana, but the goal is to expand in the city of Santa Ana. Um with my role now as a district manager, we're expanding in Anaheim and Riverside. Um we also work in Garden Grove, Huntington Beach and New Forest University School District. So we're all over the place, all around Orange County.
Well, thank you. Diffin wants your card after or your.
Anything else that we'd like to add that we can move on to staff and other comments?
I think I've spoken up. Thank you for bringing him back. Uh he's always welcome here. Uh so definitely thank you for having. I think we have enough information to go back and figure out some logistics information, maybe bring back an action item for you at our next meeting. With regards to uh the remaining funding and then how we proceed for the next four years. Um so it'll be exciting. There's a lot changing and you know with with Weowas and any of our workforce programs every four to eight years. Uh it kind of changes a little bit, gets more strict, gets less strict, gets more money, less money, depending on who's in office and so. We just roll with it and figure out and adjust and adapt and pivot and all of that, so. Um I think I have enough to to work with, so we'll definitely keep you guys posted and at our next meeting. Um I'll provide some more feedback after our meetings and then hopefully an action item that we can uh work with.
Uh Youth Council Committee member comments, comments from. I just have one. One of the great barriers in this country for a lot of people who work is healthcare. And uh and I'm coming from school districts, you know, imagine if school districts took all that money they spent on healthcare and put it back in the classroom. So on that note, um California will be leading the way for single payer healthcare and I predict. Working on getting waivers from the federal government on how to do that. That's a huge thing. Currently, there's legislation on the table, bringing everybody to the table to talk about it, because you can exclude people from that. But uh healthcare is a big, I mean, one of the reports you talked about uh. Someone attained a part-time job as a instructional aid, parent educator in Santa Ana. They're part-time because of the barrier of healthcare.
I know, I'm higher than part-time and it's one hour.
And the controversial part, the the harsh political part about it is people say, well, how do you pay for that? Well, if you take the twenty percent that insurance companies take, that pays for it plus. So it's a tough, tough political thing. People are, healthcare is very sensitive. You talk to unions about taking away their healthcare, they get upset. So it's a conversation that's it's a real conversation that's going on now and considering that. Healthcare is the biggest cause of bankruptcy in this country, people with healthcare. Because, you know, out of pocket, all those things that people, you know, it's tough. So uh I'm a political one, so I brought that up.
So uh in January, we are partnering with a hospital. That is uh their residents are gonna come to OTAC and they're gonna do first free health screenings. And vital signs to everyone that wants to come try something. Yes, yes, yes. We're in the planning stages right now, but uh we're, it's like twenty residents. Uh for West Anaheim Medical Center, they're in Anaheim. And so I'm very excited about this, but it's like a big deal. We have to find, so we're trying to get the hospitals. To to also host uh the instruments that the residents need to bring them to our agency, so you know. At least we'll be able to do that, the basic, you know, health screenings and things like that and we'll see.
Doctor oversee what the.
Yes, there's always a doctor overseeing the residents. They have what they call the attending physician. They have to. Yes, they have to be signed up, but and more when they are prescribing medication. Which we're still talking about that. I'm not sure if we wanna do the whole thing or just basic, you know, we're still talking. About the vital signs and health screenings, maybe the basics and then refer out. That's what.
Suggestions that they may make, they may need to have an ending oversee.
Oh yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, yeah, they do.
So in closing, I just want to say thank you to everybody. You're all making a huge difference in community lives of our youth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is. October.